Good evening, everybody. It's good to see you here. I'm Shelley Tugus, Director of the Hudson Area Public Library, the sponsor of this forum. And tonight, we're going to learn more about the six candidates running for three seats on the Hudson School Board. You can just raise your hands. I don't know if everyone can see your names, but we have Lynn Robson. She's an incumbent and candidates Addison Filiatro, Erin Gerlick, Jo Rivera, Brian Dahl, and Maria Rudy. I want to thank each of them for participating tonight and for caring enough about kids in our community to run for local office. It's a really difficult time, even in local government, and, you know, local leadership is not an easy gig, so we appreciate you. So here's what we'll do tonight. After introductions, we'll have questions about local issues, and we're going to end with closing remarks. And generally, I want everyone to have two minutes, but we have six candidates, just 90 minutes. The time is going to go by really fast, so just be assured no one will be upset by concise remarks. You can, you don't have to fill the two minutes if you are not inclined to do so. And Annie is our timekeeper, and we're going old-school kindergarten. She's got a yellow sheet, meaning you have 30 seconds left, and red is stop. Time is up. So, let's get started. So we will start Addison first, and then we'll keep rotating who goes next. So if you would each take no more than two minutes to introduce yourself, tell us about your credentials, and what motivated you to run for the Hudson School Board?
I grew up in River Falls, and I got my bachelor's in English education from the University of Wisconsin-Oklahoma. My husband and I moved back to the area 12 years ago, and I got my master's in reading from UWRF, and I'm pursuing my second master's from Hamlin in school administration, and should be done next year. I've taught English and reading intervention to grades one through 12 for the past 15 years, and I have two boys in pre-K and second grade at Willow. I've volunteered at the library and for Moms Demand Action, and I've been on multiple different forums, or multiple different of the school forums, like the Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, and the Health and Human Growth Development, and the Character Education Council. The reason that I'm running is because with looming budget cuts, I'm the only teacher running or on the school board, and it is really weird to me to not have a teacher's voice on a school board, especially with the looming budget cuts. I'm really passionate about the quality of education that Hudson has, and with my two boys going to Willow, I am the possibility of the school being cut. I do want to ensure that there's community conversations that revolve around the possible school closures. That's, I'm done.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It was a snow day, so I appreciate you taking your time out of your evening to come, and thank you also to Shelley Tugus and the Hudson Area Public Library for sponsoring this event. My name is Lynn Robson, and my family and I have lived in the Hudson community for 30 years. My two daughters, Danielle and Cameron, are proud Hudson graduates in the class of 2019 and 2020-24. In my professional life, I've been a commercial real estate broker and owner of the firm for 19 years, and prior to my career in the real estate industry, I had a 25-year career in the automotive industry, where I served as the CFO for Maury's Automotive Group and the Luther Automotive Group. I continue to work on mergers and acquisitions in my professional life as a consultant in the automotive industry. I previously served on the Hudson School Board for three terms from 2008 to 2017. I currently serve on the Hudson School Board because I was appointed in November of 2023 when a seat was being vacated by a board member who was moving out of the district. I'm here because I am committed to community service, and I feel like my service on the Hudson Board of Education is the most important place I can contribute to my community.
Thank you, Shelley, and Hudson Library for hosting, and I just want to thank my fellow candidates for running. My name is Maria Rudy, and my husband Jerry and I have lived in Hudson for nearly 20 years. We started out in North Hudson, and we now live in the town of Hudson. We have two children. My son Matthew is in ninth grade at the high school, and Nathan is in eighth grade at the middle school. And like many of you, we chose Hudson because of the schools for where we were going to grow our family. Our kids started elementary at Rivercrest in 2018, or started at Rivercrest, and then in 2018, we were rebounded to Hudson Prairie. And I can say, we've always felt welcome in each school building, and have loved being a part of this vibrant community. Over the past 10 years with the kids in school, I've had the privilege of volunteering in various ways to support our schools, whether it was chaperoning field trips, or sports or bands, and contributing to committees like the Elementary Reboundary Committee, the Human Growth Development, and the Teaching and Learning Committee. I've also volunteered for the Hudson Backpack Program, which is now Operation Help, and they're always looking for help, so please consider them, just a shout out. And I currently chair the Vibrant Communities Fund at the St. Croix Valley Foundation. This is a fund that was created by community members who donated their money to say, how do we make our community a place where everybody can thrive, live, work, worship, and play? We have granted over $100,000 each year in the past two years to providing mental health services in our community, and we're working on another round of funding. My family's experiences with Hudson schools, teachers, and other families have deepened my appreciation for the strong commitment our community has to schools. We know that strong schools with rigorous academic programs and a wide range of extracurricular activities play a vital role in building strong communities, and they provide our children with opportunities to succeed and help drive economic growth by attracting families and businesses who recognize the value of a high-quality education. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Erin Gerlock, and I'm honored to be running for the Hudson School Board. As a Hudson native and Hudson High School graduate, I am a mother of three children in the district, a professional in sales and marketing, and a current board member of the Hudson Virtual Charter School. I am deeply invested in the success of our schools. My background includes 10 years of human resources, continued education in health and wellness, and experience serving as a PTO president at Trine Academy, where I worked to strengthen school-community relationships. My passion for education and advocacy began six years ago, when my family was directly impacted by the boundary line changes that happened in the district. Since then, I've been engaged in shaping the future of our schools, participating in initiatives like the Future Search Project and the Character Council Education Board. Group, group. I'm running because I believe we need strong leadership that prioritizes academics, fiscal responsibility, accountability, and eliminating distractions, so our students and teachers can focus on what truly matters, which is education. I want to ensure that parents have a voice, our taxpayer dollars are used wisely, and every student has the opportunity to succeed.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Jo Rivera, and I'm honored to be here, running for, as a candidate, for the Hudson School Board. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank all the fellow candidates sitting here next to me today. Your willingness to serve our community speaks volumes. I am honored to be here and stand alongside you in this important election. I'm running for the board because I believe every child in Hudson deserves a strong academic foundation that prepares them for the future. As a father of two young children in the district, I understand what a high-quality education has on our children and the impact on their future. As an Air Force veteran with 20 years of service, and additional seven years of service in leadership and HR, I've committed my career to problem-solving, strategic planning, and ensuring that organizations operate effectively. I will bring that same commitment to the school board, focusing on policies that improve academic proficiency, enhance the safety of our students and staff, and ensuring that every single dollar spent goes to improving academic outcomes, not just shiny and new things. We chose to raise our family here in Hudson, in part because of our great schools. As a military family, my wife served 10 years in the Air Force as well, both of us obtaining master's degrees, we've been all around the world and have seen firsthand the value that education has on a community. That helped us realize, when we moved here to Hudson, that we made the right decision in becoming part of the Raider family. I remember coming to Hudson as a kid, fishing on the St. Croix, and eating way too much ice cream at Dairy Queen. Little did I know that my path would bring me back here as a father to raise my children. That decision to come here and enrolling our children here two years ago has not disappointed us. I love what our schools do, and I want to take us to the next level. Our school should be a place where our children are challenged, supported, and prepared for the future, whatever that may hold, whether it's college, technical school, or another career path. I believe in transparency, accountability, and ensuring that parents have a voice in their children's education. Thank you for coming out here tonight, and I hope I can earn your support.
Thanks, Jo, and thanks to everyone else for being here tonight. My name is Brian Dahl. I was born and raised in Holton, where I currently live with my wife and three children. I have a fifth grader and a second grader at Holton School, and a four-year-old that will someday be ready for kindergarten. I attended Holton School and eventually graduated from this high school in 1998, and actually, last time I was on this stage was as a member of swing choir, and I was singing a song about a pig. Not going to do that here tonight. After graduation, I left for college at St. John's University and was never sure I'd ever come back. I graduated from college in 2002 with a degree in history, and my first job was as an English teacher in China. I returned home eventually and landed at the Humphrey Institute for Public Affairs, where I graduated with a degree in public policy in 2008. And about 15 years ago, I started my current role as a leader in public finance and budgeting with the state of Minnesota. Until five years ago, my wife and I thought we were in our forever home and community, but as my daughter entered school, we began to experience the challenges and instability that comes with a poorly managed school system. We moved back home to this community four years ago for many reasons, but among the top is the strong and stable school system that we have today. I entered this race because I believe our district is at an inflection point. Choices made over the next three years will have a long-term impact on the district, our students, and our community. It's important to me that we protect the core strengths of this district when making these decisions. These strengths to me include our moderate class sizes, well-compensated and supported teachers and staff, and nimble schools and district that can effectively respond and adjust to the needs of our students, community, and our society. Thanks.
Thank you. So we will talk about the referendum and other challenges, so just hang on to those thoughts for a moment. First, I'd like to know, what excites you about our schools? In what ways do you think we really excel? Lynn, why don't you go ahead and start?
Well, one of the things that excites me about Hudson schools are our test scores. This year, the Hudson School District received good news on the Wisconsin School State Report Card. The district attained the exceeds expectations rating from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, and the district's overall report card rating places Hudson in the top 10% of all K-12 schools in Wisconsin. Additionally, this is the highest school district rating in CISA 11 and in the Big Rivers Athletic Conference. So I'm very proud of our school report card. I'm also very proud of all of the offerings that we have to give to our students. Students with all different interests can find something that supports their learning and their achievement in Hudson. I also feel like we have a fiscally conservative district, and I feel like we do a great job of taking care and respecting our taxpayer. Some of the other things that I'm proud of are the passionate teachers that we have in our district. I feel like that's where the magic happens, is in the classroom, and so supporting those teachers and making sure that we are able to attract and retain them, to keep them in our classrooms, I feel is important. Thank you.
What excites me about this district? You know, with two kids who've been participating in the schools since kindergarten, it's the school communities. It's each school creates a community for those, for the kids, and for the families, and for the parents, and the teachers, and the dedication that the teachers bring every single day when they walk through that door. I'll never forget the day that we had our first, after we were rebounded, and we had to bring the kids to Hudson Prairie for the first time. The staff met the kids at the door, and they said, "Welcome," to each child, and called them out by name, having never met them before. Those teachers and staff memorized the faces and names of every single new student and welcomed them with excitement. Man, that's dedication, and that really, that excites me about our district. I see the strong academics and the offerings that our kids have as they progress from middle school or from elementary through middle school and high school, and the teachers that craft new activities. Right now, I can think in the middle school, my son Nathan, in their civics class, they're recreating the Continental Congress and going through that activity in an interactive way. That's an amazing thing, and it sparks a lot of conversations at home. We have strong extracurricular activities at every, at every level, from the clubs and activities that are offered at the middle school, that welcome every kid, from art to science and math, to drama, to swim club. There's something that every kid can connect and build relationships and friendships with outside of the regular school day. At the high school, it's amazing the things that they offer every, every semester when the kids get to come through the doors and select their classes in the, in the fall and think about what they want to do. There's something for, from culinary arts to welding to, oh, I'm, thank you.
I would like to echo that we have great teachers. It takes only one teacher to make a huge difference in just a kid's life, and it takes them all the way through their adulthood. I have that experience myself, so I, that's always something that's good to mention, is great teachers. I love the extra electives that are offered here. I think that opens up so many more opportunities for our kids to just try things out, and it gets them excited about going to school when they know that, hey, I might not like doing this, but I get to do that. I think it brings joy to the teachers, too, to be able to teach those other things. It keeps things interesting. I really love the opportunity of partnering with the local businesses and the college offerings for career-ready classes, and I really am excited to keep seeing that relationship fostered. And really, I don't know how anybody up here would disagree, but musicals and the plays here, even Brian's pig that he was talking about earlier, dancing up here. But really, and our sports teams here, we have just very, very talented youth, and it's exciting to watch them grow.
So you kind of notice a common theme here, right? We all speak about the great teachers, the great community that we have here, and I'm just going to fall in line with that. But what I want to do is I want to tell you all a little story. So we decided to move to Hudson with three weeks before the start of the school year. My first interaction was with calling the district and speaking to Tim Miner to get enrolled. He went above and beyond ensuring that we were able to get my family enrolled and make sure that we start school on time. His dedication and attentiveness to our needs and the stress that we had from moving was immediately kind of relieved. A couple days later, I received a phone call from our new principal, Joe Benke. If you guys haven't met him, you're missing out. He's an amazing person. He reached out and said, "Hey, I'm the principal of your new school. You guys have already missed orientation. When you get in town, please call me. I will take you around and show you everything you need to know." We got in town, as soon as I walked through that door, he already knew who I was, he knew who my kids were, and he was ready to show us the school. Those kind of connections are what excite me about Hudson. I've seen the community rally around everyone and make it a positive learning experience for everyone. When, every day, when my, I have a first grader and a kindergartner, when they get ready to school, go to school, they're just excited, and I'm excited for them, because I know when they go through those doors, they're going to get a quality education from a great community. And so when I talk about what excites me, that's what excites me about our schools.
So I want to echo what everybody at the table has said so far. I think we all experience a supportive school system that, that our children have access to our teachers, and parents have access to the teachers, and we have input into the curriculum. There's high achievement, there's opportunity, there's a robust curriculum, but I want to say something that maybe not the most popular group here, but I, but I think is somebody, something that really brings a strength to our school district, which is the administration. And hang with me for a second. I, I, my, my second grader, when we rolled out the, the new reading curriculum last year, our experience as parents and her experience as a, as a second grader, was that it was a smooth transition. It was clear that our teachers were supported, and it was clear that the administration had thought through how to roll out the new curriculum, how to, how to have resources for the teachers, resources for parents to understand what the changes were. And I, I think that that's, that's certainly the answers that others have given. I'm right there with you, but certainly that's a strength of this district as well.
As everybody has said, we have a great district. Something that sticks out to me is the sense of community. I love being a parent of Willow. That place is so tight-knit and just wonderful to be in. The district has had a 4% increase in a sense of belonging, so they are really trying to make gains in mental health. And I do have very close ties to special ed. The district does such a good job with special ed. It's astounding. It has been life-changing for my child, and I can't speak any more positively than what they've done. There's high-quality staff, there's very few complaints about the staff. And the thing that excites me probably the most is, basically, we have a community college at our high school. We have a welding academy coming in fall, and there are more girls that are enrolling in welding, which is amazing. We have basically a full-body auto shop, and kids can do dual enrollment and get, so basically, I'm just, if you haven't thought about this, your kids can do dual enrollment at the high school and get college credit for free. 100 out of 300 kids in our CISA are participating in youth apprenticeship. They can do a student enterprise business, and it's just, the opportunities at the high school are insane, and I've worked at high schools, and it's just not the same anywhere. Parents have an opportunity to voice, have a voice through the Teaching and Learning Committee and various other committees the district does, and Dave Grandpo does a great job. And then we've been ahead of the game and seen close gaps because the district was ahead with the science of reading. And when I was at a Teaching and Learning Committee, that's where I started learning about letters and the science of reading because of this district. And so I appreciate that they're ahead of the game always. Done.
Well, thank you for that. So I want to talk about the operating referendum and just a little bit of background. Last year, almost half of the state's 421 school districts brought referendum questions to their voters. That's a lot of districts. And in November, Hudson voters rejected an operational referendum for $5 million. That was the recurring levy override. So that means it had no cutoff date, and that concerns some voters. So this question is on the ballot again next month, but this time, the district is asking for the same amount, the $5 million, but it would be $5 million a year for six years. So there is a specific end date. Do you support the referendum, and why or why not? Maria, I think you're first.
Yes, I do. I supported it last time, I supported it this time. Our district, like many, many other districts across our state, we are facing the structural realities of the funding model that is in place, and it needs to be updated, it needs to be modernized. A decade ago, funding for schools, the majority of it came from the state, with about 30% coming from the local tax base. Fast forward to today, we have the inverse of that. The majority of our funding is coming from the local tax base, with 30% coming from the state, and even smaller slice coming from the federal government. It is not sustainable. It is pushing increased pressures on local communities like Hudson across Wisconsin. We need the state as partners in this to help us address this. In 2019, there was a Blue Ribbon Commission, bipartisan commission. They came together across the aisle and identified five, five ways they can change the funding formula, and a combination of any of those will dramatically change the funding that is coming from the state and reduce the burden on our local tax base. Making sure that communities like Hudson have sustainable and equitable funding to maintain the rigorous academic and extracurricular activities that we need. We need that partnership with the state. I hope that the referendum will pass and provide us a bridge. That's how I'm viewing it. This is a bridge, a time-limited bridge, to shore up what is happening with our budget. We need a combination of tax and cuts, and the district has made cuts. $3 million over the last year, with another 1.7 scheduled for this coming year. Those cuts are not easy. This district is in the people business, it's impacting families, and we need this bridge.
I am focused on ensuring that taxpayer dollars, particularly those of the most vulnerable in our community, which are seniors and our veterans that are on fixed incomes, are used efficiently. I could elaborate quite a bit on this, but I realize there's only two minutes here, and she's going to wave this at me. But this is really coming from some sensitive and really sad situations that I have witnessed over the past few weeks on a personal level. The rising cost of goods are, with eggs particularly, are $8 a dozen, if you haven't noticed. And just this week, standing in line, there was a senior in front of me that literally could not pay for her groceries. I offered to cover the costs, and this woman started to cry out of joy and that somebody was offering to help her, but also embarrassment because she just simply didn't have the money. Many people are struggling with these rising costs. The Harvest Pantry here in Hudson reports that one-third of our community relies on the pantry, and they currently serve 300 of our kids in the community through their backpack program. When we are asking people to tax themselves even more, the district needs to reciprocate and also be willing to do with less. Our parents and our grandparents did that, and they are still doing that with this same ask. While I believe in funding our schools properly, I also advocate for transparency in spending money and prioritize the academic needs over other essential expenses. I think we really need to reevaluate this current situation. It was hard to hear just this week at the board meeting that the referendum, should it pass, will not even cover everything needed, and so my concern is, then what? I'm ready to work hard to ensure that the students do not lack in their education, and I just don't feel like this referendum is the right answer.
So last year, so last year, when the referendum was on the ballot, as a new member to the community, I voted for it. I voted for it because I heard that voting yes for this referendum was going to save our schools. Well, November 5th came around, and the community spoke loudly. The community rejected the referendum for the second time. Now I do not support the referendum. I support the need to get funding for our schools and to work on that, but that's a problem that's happened since 2009, and we're in 2025. What has happened over 16 years? I think it is time that we listen to the community and respect the wishes that they have told us. As a board member, I will ensure to make tough decisions and make sure to get us on track while keeping our quality education and as much services as we can for our students. Our students deserve it, and we deserve to go ahead and provide them with a quality education. Furthermore, there's sayings about, you know, it's just a cup of coffee for the referendum. Well, I take offense to that. We have members of the community that are on fixed incomes that maybe can't afford a cup of coffee. I will never get in the business of spending anybody's money because that is not my right. But what I will do is ensure that the money that is funding for our schools, I will spend it wisely and ensure that it improves the academic, academic outcomes for our students. Thank you.
I do support the referendum. I do so hesitantly. I don't, I don't love that we have to rely on property taxes to fund our schools in the state of Wisconsin. Property taxes, as, as Erin mentioned, the, the, those with the least among us pay the most of their income for property taxes. It's not the right way to pay for our schools, but it's the way we are forced to pay for our schools in the state of Wisconsin. We haven't We haven't, this, the, the legislature hasn't, they made a choice in 2010 to start to step out of the business of funding our schools, funding our operating budgets, keeping our school budgets at a level that maintains our programs, maintains the welding program, maintains the AP courses, maintains the administrators to support the reading curriculum. If this referendum doesn't pass, not only are we going to need to make choices about closing schools that we all love, but we are going to have to make choices about increasing class sizes, about laying off teachers, about shutting down programs like welding in our high school and AP courses and 3D printing. I don't want to be here for that. I would, I want this referendum to pass. Our district needs more resources to maintain the strong schools that we have.
It's not a secret that I go to the vote yes committee meetings and I actively campaign for voting yes. I lost my job in Hastings due to budget cuts and it really sucked and it, I don't want teachers or support staff or custodians to lose their jobs and anything that I can do to make it so that people do not lose their jobs, I support. However, the state legislature has stopped funding for inflation, inflation in 2010. It's bad reimbursement, or special ed, sorry, I shouldn't use acronyms. Special ed reimbursement is at 30%. It is widely supported to increase it to 60%, so we take the millions of dollars that we use from the general fund to support special ed students. So what I am advocating for people to do and regularly tell people, people to do is to call our state legislature. Shannon Zimmerman's number is 608-237-9130. And Rob Staffs' number is 608-266-7745 because they both serve on the joint finance committee and they can help us with getting our money that we need to support our schools because they are sitting on a $4.5 billion surplus. And again, I just support this because it's not really, it's $4 for a $100,000 home. I have experienced living paycheck to paycheck. I get it. I understand, but it's not that much money and we can cover the cost.
I also support the referendum. I agreed with the decision and voted for it as a board member. Much like Maria said, I do believe it's a bridge. It buys us time to figure out how to reconfigure our schools, how to look at how to rebound our district and realign our brick and mortar structure as part of that. But I believe it's going to take more than a referendum to fix the budget. I think we need solutions on both the revenue and the expense side of the equation. There are no easy choices. There aren't going to be easy choices when budget cuts are needed. But I believe that we need to work with the administration and the teacher committee to look at prioritizing these future cuts to align with the budget, but that would have the least negative impact on student learning and maintain the quality of education that this community expects. Just as a data point, when we're talking about one of the reasons that we do have the need for a referendum, it's obviously declining enrollment. So a, a data point for us is our graduating class this year is 476 and next year's incoming kindergarten is 243 as of today. That decline results in an annual revenue reduction of $2.877 million. So these are real dollars and it's a function of declining birth rates in our community. And obviously, everybody in this panel has talked about the state policy limits, but one of our board members drafted a very well-written letter to the joint finance committee about a lot of the things that you guys were talking about and ways that, and recommendations, echoing recommendations from that committee, the blue ribbon committee. And we are all, I shouldn't say all, I think it's a majority are going down to Madison to talk about these budget issues next week. So hopefully we'll have some time with them and be able to make some traction.
Thank you. I know whether people agree or disagree with your answers, I appreciate that everybody had a direct response. I think that's really valuable. This is also related to, to the referendum, but some broader context and some of these things you've, you've touched on. We're really dealing with two key issues. The first is the birth rate. It's declining in Wisconsin. It's declining nationwide. So we have declining enrollment and funding is tied to our enrollment numbers. And you've touched on school funding has not kept pace with inflation. Ultimately, some people are going to advocate for cutting the budget and making do with what we have and others want to lobby state lawmakers to tackle the revenue side of things. So this is bigger than just the school board, of course, but you are advocates. You might disagree in what it is you're advocating, but you're advocates. What steps would you advocate for if this referendum does fail? And I know parents would love to hear a specific answer, if you can, on what you see in terms of closing schools. And Erin, you're first.
Well, the school board made it pretty clear in January 13th that they already decided that these schools need to close. So my focus is on supporting the students and teachers through that transition. I don't like that this is happening. I wasn't part of any of the decisions that led up to this, but as an incoming board member, I have a responsibility and that is to do what's best for the community and help these families through this process. I will ensure that the move is handled with great care, minimizing disruption to the education and providing the resources and support needed to, for a smooth transition. Our priority should always be the well-being and success of our students affected. You know, as a plan to increase funding for the schools, increase state funding for schools is vital for our district's success. There's no argument with that. However, it starts with the school board making tough decisions to prioritize spending wisely and implementing necessary cuts where needed. So though some people may say they don't want to be part of that and they don't, you know, that, that's upsetting to them. It's kind of too bad. That's your role as a board member and it's about being responsible at both the local and the state levels.
So before I answer that question, I also want to make it clear that, you know, this referendum is a touchy subject for everyone, for everyone in our community. Like I said, I supported it before. I don't support it this time, but I do support the outcome on April 1st. One thing that I think is actually unfair, five of us sitting up here today have never dealt with any of these issues. So to put the referendum in our laps as a make or break issue for the voters, I consider that to be unfair. But I will tell you what I will do. I will continue to advocate for our schools and I will make sure that we are actually lobbying our legislators. I know they're going down there to do it, you know, next week. It's the ninth inning of the ballgame. What, what's been going on since 2010? I will ensure that we get the funding or try my hardest to get the funding that we need to do and to make the cuts that we need to make. On January 7th, they held a community conversation with about 170 community members and we talked about cuts that need to be made. The vast majority of people said, yep, cut administrators and maybe cut cleaning in the school buildings. We do that, we, we're still not going to get to where we need to get. I don't like the idea of closing schools. I don't like it at all. But we are operating our elementary schools at an average of a 66% capacity. That is just not sustainable going forward. People talk about rising class sizes. Well, with the declining enrollment, if we consolidate our buildings, we're still going to be within our metrics for class sizes. So we just need to kind of think about that. And while I understand that it is a tough issue and it is an issue that affects all of us, I will lead with compassion and ensure that we do our best to improve the academic success of all of our children.
So first to the, the question of advocating, I, I certainly agree with what, what Lynn referenced about going down to, to lobby our legislators. I'm disappointed that we have two legislators who are on the finance committee who have not made choices, whether it be this year or last year or the 10 years prior, going back to 2010. There have been people in this community and there have been members of the community in, in Wisconsin, namely our teachers out there advocating for funding for the school. And the legislature has not stepped up. We need to continue as a community, including the school board, to advocate for why the state needs to pay for its schools. That's something I'll commit to do. That's something I have done. I will commit to do if I'm lucky enough to be elected to the board. As to, to closing schools, I don't want to do it. I'm, I'm one of two people up here with, with kids at one of the schools in question. In fact, I went to one of the schools that may close. One of the reasons we moved here is to go to that school. We love that school. It will be painful. I don't want to do it, but at the end of the day, I want to protect the core of this district. I want to make sure our class sizes are modest, that our, our teachers are supportive, that our district remains nimble and able to deliver to the needs of the community. At the end of the day, if that's the choice, that's more important than protecting brick and mortar.
I looked at the enrollment on Monday and it was lower than projected by about 50 kids. It hasn't been that low since 2001 for kids coming into kindergarten. And when I looked at that, I knew that, I've been really advocating to keep the schools open and I'm still hopeful that we can find creative solutions and that we can get the funding from the state. I really don't want to because we have just had the best experience possible at Willow. And I know that Brian has also had a great experience at Holton. It really hurts my heart to even contemplate that because Willow has kept us in this district. I'm a little sad. But I am also looking at it as an opportunity for change for the district and it, because I've been in education for 15 years. I started when like, we didn't have smart boards. And so I know that change always happens and these, this is an opportunity for us to think about how we are doing education. So what could we do with Holton? Could we make it into a magnet school? Because I think that we will actually lose some more kids going to New Richmond if we close that school. And as far as what cuts I have been looking at is having more community bus stops for transportation routes, examining our utility costs, because I did look at the utility bills for each school and some of them are astronomical. So what could we do to decrease some of our utility bills, delay curriculum and technical or tech advancements every other day cleaning and just really have the least impact on students as possible and staff.
To address something that Joe mentioned, we, we have been advocating as a district and as a board to our legislature. I, I know that you, if you haven't been in this community and probably watching board meetings for all of these years, but there has been.
I've been there.
I understand. Okay. But we, we have been advocating. And as far as what steps would you advocate for if the referendum fails, I would say everything is on the table. I mean, we're going to need to look at a combination of different cuts. Taking away janitorial and going to every other day isn't going to fill that bucket. So it's going to need to be looking at which decisions that we can make and closing schools would be one of those that would have the biggest impact on filling that, that hole. Obviously, we're over, we're under capacity at our elementaries, so we're going to need to look at both the reboundary and the closure of schools to right-size our budget.
What steps would I advocate for the, if the budget, if the referendum fails? Excuse me. You know, our schools are integral to our community and our neighborhoods and there's a lot of history and pride and connection to each school and these are really tough conversations. I want to acknowledge that. We're in a position because of the factors that are outside of our, outside of our control. We, we need to acknowledge the realities of the funding formula that is in place that is outdated and we need to work together to determine sustainable and equitable, equitable building mix. As other speakers up here have said, we're underutilizing our buildings. 60 for, 65% capacity when we aim for 80% capacity is not sustainable. We are not able to provide the supports across each of those buildings that the students deserve. We're going to have to have those conversations and they're going to be tough, but we can do it as a community. We've done it before. I would echo what Lynn has said. Everything is on the table. If we're looking at an $8 million plus deficit in our budget by 2028, 2029, which is what is projected by Baird, that's a significant budget cut. You can't get there by just cutting staff. You're going to be making some very big changes to this district and what we do. One of the things that I would prioritize is making sure that we have very open and clear communication channels with the community at every step, that we're looking to build consensus at every step in the process and that we are prioritizing the needs of our students, particularly the students that have special education and need additional intervention support, our most vulnerable students. That is what makes me the most nervous about as we walk into this election and what it would mean if that referendum would fail and the impacts directly to those students. How are we protecting them and making sure that they have the supports every day and the staff who come in and work with them to ensure that they can engage and achieve academic success? That would be a top priority for me.
Thank you. So I've recently had the opportunity to participate in the Chambers Leadership Hudson Program and it's, it's been a phenomenal experience. One of the topics discussed at a recent session, it was focused on community health and included mental health, particularly the rates of anxiety and depression in our kids. And again, this is much bigger issue than the school board, but what role, if any, do you see that the board could have in addressing this issue? I'm sorry, and Joe, you'd be going first.
Sorry, I couldn't remember if it was, if it was on me. Mental health is a big, important issue throughout, throughout the world. Not only do we have to address the mental health of our students, we also have to address the mental health challenges that our teachers are facing. Our teachers are being asked to do more and more every day. They're asked to be counselors, mental health professionals, coaches, all sorts of things. And while they do a great job of doing it, that, that's not what they're supposed to do. We need to advocate for actually having the mental health services for our students that are outside of the district. That is the role of the county. That is the role of, of them to, to have those mental health services for our students. One of the big issues with mental health is these little things that everyone seems to have around on them are these cell phones. These cell phones are causing outrageous numbers of anxiety in our children, in our parents and across the world. So I think something as small or as simple as just getting rid of cell phones in our schools, you could see our mental health rates improve dramatically. Thank you.
So mental health is a, is an issue that, that hits all of us personally. I, I think a couple of things come to mind first. We, we have to keep looking at how, how our schools can support the mental health of our kids, whether it's, it's access to counselors in school. If, if you all have young children, you've ever had to go to an appointment in the middle of the day and the doctor's far away or the counselor's far away, it, it eats away at your ability to do your job. That's, that's one piece. The next is working with the community, whether it's the city. The county needs to do more. You know, the, there's a saying, it takes a village to, to raise a child and I, I really believe that, especially with mental health. And then echo a little bit of what, what Joe talked about and go a little bit further on, on, on technology, social media. It's clear, you know, we entered this technological age, this age of social media, kind of blind. We went in and we thought the more, the better. The more, the better in our schools, the more, the better in our pockets. And we didn't step back to say, "What makes sense for ourselves? What makes sense for our kids?" Sometimes it feels like we're acting in the best interests of Google and Apple and Meta as opposed to the best interests of ourselves. So as a board member, I'd like to look at not only our personal device policies, but also, you know, actual technology in the classroom. Is it time to start going back to books and chalkboards or whiteboards and putting away the Chromebooks and learning that way?
So I do want to give a shout out to the district for their increase of student sense of belonging by 4%. That is a big deal, and it does help with mental health. I've done programs for educators. One thing that I did was I got my yoga certification. It's called Breathe for Change, and it's literally for trauma-informed yoga in the classroom. And yoga, like it's just basic, you're not doing like crazy stuff, but just some breathing exercises and what they do for morning meeting is really impactful. And I know all the elementary schools do morning meeting, and if the middle school and high school aren't, then I would really encourage them to. But I know that the middle and high school have advisories, and that is helpful for mental health. It does give kids a sense of belonging. And then partnerships within the community. I've worked with some drug counseling programs where I've worked in the past, and it's just so imperative to help kids know what they can do to prevent drug use because that is associated with mental health and anxiety. I've had a student unfortunately pass away from that, and it impacts the whole school community when that happens. And so just prevention, an ounce of prevention with mental health goes so long. And I know the library does a lot of things with mental health. And as Brian said, it does take a village, and I think that all levels of government should work together, like state, local, city, county, and federal. And that's what I have to say.
I think the Hudson School District does a great job prioritizing mental health in the district, especially post-COVID. There was a lot of discussions post-COVID on how they were going to support those students and the teachers, and I think they have put a lot of interventions in place to do so. As a board member, I believe our role is to make sure we prioritize funding for mental health, providing access to services in the district for those kids in need, as well as supporting our teaching staff.
I'm gonna echo a little bit of what Lynn said. I'm gonna say the role of the board is to set the goals and the priority, or to work with the administration to set the goals and the priorities for the district, and then make sure that the funding meets those goals and priorities, that it's distributed where it needs to be. Mental health is a priority in this district. They offer mental health first aid training. They co-locate mental health services within our buildings to allow parents and students to access those services within a school day. We have at the middle school, the web program where everyone belongs, which brings eighth graders and sixth graders together to create a stronger sense of belonging in the middle school, which is a tough time period in any kid's life. There's peer helpers at the high school. It starts in kindergarten with students learning how to be upstanders and how to just connect with their friends and their classmates. These are all things that need to continue. I would love to see the district, if I'm on the board, reconvene the district's mental health task force. This is a critical task force that brings together not just staff across the district, but county, public health, city folks to say, "How do we do this together? It is more than just the district. It's larger. It is our entire community." I also think we need to look at the role of our counselors across our schools. Last year, we noted that there were a ratio of one counselor to 250 students with a laundry list of about 80 things they had to cover in their job description. We need to have serious conversations about what we expect from our counselors and how they support our students, and we need to readjust that ratio. Those are priorities, I think, in how the board can act to better support mental health. But again, I'm gonna say, this is a community conversation. We need parents in the mix. We need everybody at the table. Mental health is just not for the district to act on alone.
Our role in mental health is pretty simple. It's to provide a positive space for these kids to come and feel safe and included so they can be present in their learning environment. And that does include what some of these other people have set up here, which is great. Dropping the distractions and cell phones, yes, are one of them. Letting them just focus where their feet are at. It's essential for students to feel that they can approach trusted adults in the school system, so teachers, counselors, and staff for support and guidance, and a listening ear. And it's equally important, though, that that trusted adult to guide them is problem-solving and promoting resilience. Getting parents involved with their kids to get them the help that they want to see and guide them is really what is needed. If we learned anything through COVID, it was that we need to focus on the positive, which in this district happens to be the extracurriculars of music, art, and fayed. They are essential.
Joe, I didn't miss you, did I? Okay.
You started with me.
Good, all right.
I can go again if you want me to.
Okay, so this is also related to student wellness and the diverse needs we have in our school district. So looking at the district website today, it's very thorough and clear in its statement expressing commitment and dedication to the task of providing the best possible education for every student in the district. And it goes on to list the various backgrounds and characteristics our students might have. What does that mean to you as a potential policymaker for our district? And Brian, we're on you to begin.
What that means to me is that every child in our school needs an equal opportunity to have access to their teachers, their programs, and not only that, but feel safe in their That statement on the school website has a lot of meaning to me, that our kids can't learn if they don't feel safe in our schools. Our students need a safe environment to learn because our schools have to be part of developing our students into well-rounded citizens that are ready to contribute to our society. And we, you know, our state needs these people because we need a productive workforce. Our demographics are changing. It all kind of rolls together, that kids need to be safe in school. The board needs to support the administration to make sure we have policies that keep those kids feel safe, feel in a place where they can learn comfortably, be themselves, be individuals, have their integrity, and have respect.
So the district does have high test scores in reading and math and are far ahead of the state. One area that we are falling short in is students who are lower socioeconomic status. And as a board member, we do need to look at that. I have been, for the past seven years, been teaching in schools that are 100% free and reduced lunch. So I do have the experience and the knowledge and the expertise to bring forward some ideas for what we can do for setting policies to address that. As far as other diverse needs with special education, I know the district is talking about getting rid of center-based schools for autism and intellectual disabilities. I highly disagree with that for various reasons. It isn't equitable because I can tell you from being a teacher that we do not get the training that we need from our programs for special education as a general education teacher. You take two credits for special education, that's it. And then you rely on the district to train you, and North Hudson has the specialists for intellectual disabilities, and Willow has the autism base. And the teachers there are very highly trained, like our gen ed teachers. And we need to make sure that our students who are our highest needs students are getting the resources that they need. Obviously, very passionate about special ed and just making sure that everyone feels safe. We do provide a lot of opportunities for career learning at the high school, so I do think the district does do a good job of that.
So, all six of us are here because we have a dedication and a commitment to our educational system and our students in that system. Brian mentioned a safe place to learn. I feel like that's a very important place to start, that every one of our young students has somebody that they know and have identified that they can reach out to, that they can talk one-on-one with, that can get eyes on them, and that makes sure that they are supporting them. I also think as a board, we need to make sure our policies align with the value systems. So, you know, a review of the policies regularly to make sure our policies are supporting where these goals and decisions are being made. And then I also feel like we need to focus on training our staff to support these policies, making sure the staff are trained and able to identify students that are potentially at risk, and making sure they're making the appropriate interventions.
So, building on what you said, the intro, Shelley, you know, the vision of the Hudson School District is to empower all students to cultivate their talents, embrace their passions, and leverage their learning to impact the world around them. You can't do that unless you are supporting every student and welcoming them when they walk through the door, that they feel like, "This is my school community. This is where I belong. I have friends. I have connections here. I can show up and learn." Addison, you shared a little bit about special education, and that kind of took me down a different road when I thought about the best possible education for every student. We have a constitutional requirement here in Wisconsin, going back to the 1848, I believe, is when it was adopted, that said, "We will have public education for every youth aged four to 20." There's no exceptions there. It is regardless of who you are, regardless of your abilities, regardless of your needs, you can get an education here. And that means we need to make sure that we're supporting the students. Special education funding comes to our district at about 30%, of it covered by the state. The rest of it, the district covers out of the general fund, the tune of about $8 million every year. This district is committed and continues to show its commitment to meeting the needs of every student, and we cannot waver in that.
I don't know that I can say it a whole lot better than everybody else up here because it's pretty much been said. Every child is different and deserves access to quality education that meets their individual needs. I will advocate for adequate resources and programs to support them, and every student deserves the best possible outcome here. I will focus on ensuring that our curriculum and policies, that they address the needs of all learners, and it's important to listen to the students, the parents, and the teachers to identify and collaborate on the best ways to support all of them.
So as everyone has already said, you know, when it comes to crafting policies, our policy is already there to support all students. All students means every single student that comes through the door. And just like Maria said, you know, that includes everyone. So the policies don't differentiate who you are or what you are. It is for every single person. I've seen firsthand of how our curriculum and our policies are for our children. I've been a member of the Teaching and Learning Advisory Council, which is a great council of administrators, parents, teachers that review curriculum, and we see, we give our inputs as far as what the district should be utilizing. That council is amazingly ran, and in those meetings and all those times that we talk, we never talk about a specific student or something like that. We talk about every student. The only students that should have different policies are to make sure that we are keeping up with our special education students 100%. Other than that, we are all students, and all of them should be, all of them are included in our policies. Thank you.
So I want to make sure everyone has a chance to address what you think are, because I've thrown out operating levy and the budget and things like that. Are there specific challenges that you see from your point of view and where you sit that you want to bring to the board for discussion, for action? What particular issues that may have even prompted you to run? And I think we are back to Addison.
I think one of the things that I am, I know that I keep talking about special education, but I'm pretty concerned about IDEA, which is the Disability Rights Act, going to Health and Human Services, and I want to ensure that we are writing, as a district, our own very strong policy that we will support our students that are in special ed. Like I said already, addressing what the issues are with why there is such a huge gap between kids of more middle-class and higher socioeconomic status and lower socioeconomic status in their achievement. And then just ensuring that we have the budgeting for our district to keep functioning at the high level that we have, and additionally retaining staff, because there is, especially in our high-needs areas, like, again, I'm sorry I keep pounding on it, but on special education, because I'm currently working at a school where we are short on special education staff, and it is, it's not good that we are short. I'm filling a lot of the gap, being a Title I reading interventionist, but it's tricky. So it, and just making sure that we are continuing to get our high-quality staff because over the border, you can make a little bit more. But we do have a really good health insurance package, so I want to make sure that we are protecting our health insurance package.
I feel like the three biggest challenges facing our district, two of them are budget-related, and that's the declining enrollment and the state funding formula. And the other is attracting and retaining quality staff, which ends up being a budget concern as well. But as it relates to declining enrollment, you know, we all know that the reduced population directly translates to lower state aid, and the data has shown that decline in the student enrollment in Hudson is tied to lower birth rates and the decline of families moving into the district, as we refer to as in-migration. We talked earlier about the change in, you know, the number in the graduating class versus the incoming kindergarten, resulting in a $2.8 million budget gap. The other part is the state funding formula, which we talked about. If the state policy limits would have kept up with inflation, we would have $11 million more in our budget, and we wouldn't be talking about an operational referendum. So that's a big part of it. And then attracting and retaining quality staff. The quality of our district's education is a direct result of our ability to attract and retain quality staff. If declining enrollment and capped revenue from the state funding formula are not addressed, we will be limited in our ability to offer competitive compensation and benefits, which allows us to recruit and retain quality professionals.
Very similarly for me, it's the operational budget. It's how we think about and work together with the towns and the county to think about the makeup of our community. We have a declining enrollment, our population, we're just the mix of housing that's here. We're not attracting families. The district cannot, that's not within their purview, but we have to be advocating and talking with the county, with the towns, with the city. How are we doing this? How are we thinking about community development? We know that strong schools create strong communities. They create strong, thriving communities that attract businesses, that attract families, that attract economic growth. It is a collaborative partnership, and that's something I think, I know the district has been doing, and they do do it. I'd like to see more of it, and I'd like to see more open conversation about it, about when and where they're connecting with the county, with the community development boards. When I think of the other issue for me, it's a When I think of the other issue for me, it's achievement. We do have strong achievement, right? We've, we're in the top ten percent of the Wisconsin schools. But there's always room for improvement and I'm most concerned about those kids in the middle and the kids on the lower end of the achievement scale. How are we supporting them? We can't increase achievement scores. We can't have academic success without staff. They are the backbone of our, our staff and teachers are the backbone of our schools. We need to recruit and retain high-qualified staff. About ten years ago, there were about seven hundred thousand new teachers in the pipeline. This last year, around four hundred thousand. The number of people going into the education profession is declining year over year. And that makes it a smaller pool, a more competitive pool, and we need that for our academic achievement.
Well, I would like to just start with saying that one of the issues, it's not really a huge, I mean, I don't know, let me start over with that. Pizza for the win. My son told me to say that if I get frustrated up here. Anyhow, I think that honestly, the voices of our teacher, they just don't get enough attention and I would like to see that change. I also think that some of the biggest challenges that our district is facing is the comprehension and proficiency levels. Even though we are in the top eleven schools in the district, I think that we definitely could make some more improvements there. I believe that the taxpayers really need to start seeing a return on investment from their last referendum that passed. And we need to prove to them that we can manage our budget effectively. I, I also have a few ideas to improve on in the district. You know, to continue to partner with businesses and schools for apprenticeships and more career-ready programs. I think that's very important as somebody who employs people, to make sure these kids are college career-ready. And I really am an advocate for eliminating distractions and social issues and politics in the classrooms. So not only the students can focus, but the teachers can teach. And I think that we won't see as low of a teacher rate that you just mentioned, Maria, if the teachers are just allowed to teach. And it's, it's what they enter the profession for in the first place. They have a passion for doing so. And if they don't have a passion, we have to ask why. In the high school, I would also like to see FIAE credits go towards yard work for senior citizens so we can kind of bring the community into things. Not all kids are sports players or dancers, and so I just think that would be a good way to involve our seniors. And I would also like to see incentives for subbing from the teachers that we have here.
So first, I couldn't agree with you more, Lynn, when we were talking about recruiting and retaining our educators. That is, that is one of the main things that we have and that is, you know, that's part of our budgetary concerns, like you said, one of those. But we need to have these strong teachers in our district. One of the things has kind of, we touched on earlier, was addressing, you know, the mental health. And I know the question was more revolved around students, but also the resources for our educators. There's so much that is being placed on them, so much things that are on their shoulders that they didn't initially sign up for, but they do it. They do it because they care about our kids and they love what they do. So we need to make sure that we are supporting them. A couple of other things that I'd like to see improved. First off, I love our district. I, I, I do. There's nothing major that I see that needs to be, you know, reformed. But I did notice that even a couple of weeks ago, our Wisconsin Assembly Education Committee passed a few measures to try to help strengthen our schools from AB one through six. Some of those things were restoring the report card standards back to the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty levels, bringing back cursive writing in our schools. Like, who here knows how to write cursive still, right? Yeah, I like it. You know, strengthening civics education for both the elementary and high school students. You know, ensuring that parents have the right to review textbooks, curriculum and instructional materials and directing that at least seventy percent of our school budgets go towards classroom instruction while promoting responsible spending. So while I love, I love our district, I, like I said earlier, I just want to take us to the next level. Thank you.
So I think the, the, the question was, was what, what is it about the district that we're, we're here for? Why, why are we doing this? And, and at, at risk of sounding like a real nerd, I, I love doing public budgets. I do it for a living. I, like, I'm not joking. I, I kind of do it as a hobby. I love doing our family budgets, but, but it, and really the reason I say that, it's not really the numbers. It's, it's budgeting is, is really a moral practice. It's, it reflects the values of our community. I want to be part of that in this community. I think that, that Hudson really values its strong schools. Our schools are the backbone of this community. And I, I've said it before here, I, I'm here because I want to protect what we have. I want to protect those class sizes. I want to protect our supported teachers and, and make sure that we can recruit better teacher, or not better teachers, we have great teachers, but recruit excellent teachers. And then the, the other piece I really want to touch on is, Maria touched on it, you know, the kids that are achieving the most are, are doing great and they're continuing to do great. And, and, and the, the kids in the middle are kind of plateauing, they're fine, but not only in this district, but, but nationally, it does appear that the kids that are, you know, in that bottom twenty, thirty percent are really starting to fall behind. And not only are they in the bottom twenty, thirty percent, but they're falling further behind. We have an achievement gap here in Hudson. We have an achievement gap in the state. We have an achievement gap nationally that we need to start looking at and figuring out how can we reach those kids and get them on a path to reaching the middle, reaching the top and really working with those kids and families to help them succeed.
Thank you. Well, we're right at about fifteen minutes left, so it's, I know, isn't it going fast? It's crazy. So we'll be able to go into closing remarks you want to make and I'm going to hope you can wrap another question into those. But first, I just want to say, thank you for coming, thank you for running. It's refreshing and reassuring to see six great people who are, spend their time doing their homework and who are really invested in our schools and seem like very compassionate people. We have a great school district and a great community, so if everyone would just give them a round for, for being here. So feel free to take that two minutes to do your closing remarks, but also you may see this differently, but I've always seen school board as sort of a bridge between the bigger community and the school community. And individual members have no authority. You have to act as a, as a whole group. And that can be really challenging. So what in your experience could you describe to us about working as a group and dealing with opposing viewpoints and building consensus and having to do that all in a public fashion? Because it's, there are some pretty tough issues facing the district and that can be a really complicated process. So Lynn, I believe we're back to you to wrap things up for us.
I believe I am. I just want to say thank you again for sponsoring this and thank you again to the community for showing up on a snow day and thank you to the people online for watching. I just want to let people know that I'm very passionate about the quality of education in our community and value the critical role it plays in the health of our community. I'm, believe that I'm uniquely qualified to fill this role based on my experience as a Hudson School Board member. During my ten years as an incumbent, I consistently demonstrated the qualities of being collaborative, transparent and an effective communicator who strives to build consensus even while making, even while making very difficult decisions. I prioritize the education of all of our students when making decisions despite having limited resources. I believe that being well-informed and current on the business of the district is an important responsibility of all of our community members. As my record shows, I am committed to serving the district by being a strong community leader and an active advocate for the goals of the district. I make decisions as a board member based on data. I support an educational system that encourages intellectual growth, high academic standards and critical thinking. Children should learn how to think independently, not be taught how to think, or what to think, excuse me. My top priorities include building and maintaining a strong, fact-based curriculum, upholding fiscal responsibility and ensuring a healthy learning environment. My campaign is not driven by a political agenda. It is rooted in my experience as a professional businessperson with decades of strategy of working in business, in negotiation, business planning, operations, business strategy, coaching and development. But mostly, my passion in this election is for the excellence in our public schools. Thank you.
First, thank you, Shelley, for moderating. I really appreciate it. You do a beautiful job. I also want to thank the community members who submitted questions and those who came tonight or are watching online. Your commitment to engaging in local elections is important. I value our public schools. I know they're more than just places of learning. They're vital hubs that connect us all. They serve as educational centers, workplaces and for many in our community and gather spacings, gathering spaces for our neighborhoods. There's rarely an evening when our school buildings are not welcoming families in the broader community to come together and celebrate. I believe in that, that the success of our schools and community depends on strong partnerships. I, I'm dedicated to building and nurturing those relationships between the schools, families and the broader community. And I deeply believe in collaboration and consensus building. When we work together, we can ensure our schools are places that provide strong academic experiences with extracurricular activities that prepare students for the future and a strong, thriving community. I have the utmost respect for the hard work that our teachers and staff do every day. Their dedication to, to creating supportive, nurturing environments enables every student to succeed. And their contributions are essential to the continued success of our schools. Our public schools are here to serve all students, to prepare and equip them with the skills, knowledge and capabilities to thrive in an ever-changing world. The school board must work to ensure that the school has programs to prepare students while also ensuring the efficient and effective use of funding and resources. It's important that every dollar spent contributes to the education of our students and the long-term stability of our district. Hudson, like many districts across the Wisconsin, is facing a significant budget challenge. The state funding formula, it needs to be modernized and to meet the educational needs of our students and the realities of, of inflation on goods and prices. We need the state's support and partnership to reduce the burden on our local communities and bridge the funding gap. I'm deeply committed to the success of our schools and the well-being of our community. Together, we have the opportunity to create an educational environment where every student can thrive and reach their full potential. As a board member, I will work tirelessly, tirelessly to ensure that our schools are well-supported, our resources are used effectively and efficiently, and our community remains engaged and united. I'm excited for the opportunity to serve and I promise to always listen, collaborate and advocate for what's best for our students and for the teachers and families in our district. I know that together we can continue to build a strong, supportive and successful school community, and I ask for your vote on April first.
I have a lot of experience in being involved in many of the Hudson schools. As, as a parent volunteer, Bethel Preschool, Trinity Academy, Rivercrest Prairie, Hudson Middle School and the Hudson High School. I manage a team of eight people and we are, we sell to thirty-two different countries. I work with a lot of European regulations. I do a lot of research and development and a lot of very technical data information and I do it all in a very, very tight budget. In fact, this last year, our budget just got completely cut and we're still seeing growth even with having those things happen and having to do more with less. I want to thank the organizers of this forum and everybody here tonight for your commitment to our schools and everybody standing on this stage right now. I would be honored to work with any of you to solve the problems in this, in this district. Hudson has great schools and incredible teachers and we must keep education our top priority. I will work to ensure our schools stay focused on academic excellence, that taxpayers' dollars are spent wisely and that teachers have the support that they need to help our students thrive. I'm a very hard worker. I'm dedicated and I am very service-oriented. I am committed to listening, to understand, making informed decisions and ensuring that parents, students and the community have a voice in our schools. If you believe in strong academics, fiscal responsibility and keeping our schools on the right path, I ask for your vote on April first.
So first to answer your question, Shelley, regarding collaboration, all six of us sitting up here today love our children, love our schools and want to see everybody succeed. So if I'm lucky enough to be on the board, I will continue that collaboration. And even when we have differences of opinion, as long as we can focus on the bigger picture, which is our children, we will be just fine. Next, I want to thank everyone for coming out here tonight. I want to thank you for listening to this important discussion about the future of our schools. I want to thank you, Shelley, in the Hudson Area Public Library for sponsoring this forum. I want to thank all the people who have supported me throughout my campaign and especially as we enter this homestretch. And I want to say a very special thank you to my wife, Mandy, and my kids, Joseph and Addison, who have sacrificed so much time so that daddy can come and help make their school experience and protect their, protect the value of their education. They've given up so much and I'm so thankful for them. Without them, without their support, I wouldn't be here tonight. I hope that you were all able to learn a little bit more about me and why I believe I'm a worthy candidate for the school board. If you have any questions for me outside of this, or you'd like for me to speak to a group of, of people, community members, I will make it happen. I believe that our community will come together, I believe for our community to come together, we can make our schools even better. You can reach me, you can go to my campaign website, joeveraforhudsonschools.com, J-O-E-R-I-V-E-R-A, the number four, hudsonschools.com. And you can find ways to link with me on Facebook or email. Last but not least, do not forget to vote on April first. It is not April Fool's Day, it's election day. You know, early in-person absentee voting, try saying that five times real fast. Early absentee in-person voting begins March eighteenth. Don't wait till April first to go out and vote. As you see what happened last night, we might get a snowstorm and it might be tough to get to the polls. So please, make sure you get out there to vote. Thanks, thank you again to the community, to our schools and everyone else in the mighty Raider Nation. Let's go. Stronger schools, stronger Hudson.
Thank you. So, so first to the question of, of collaboration, I would, I just want to say that the, the schools we have here today are the result of, of people with different opinions, different values, working together to build strong schools in this community. We have a strong history of doing that and we have a strong history of valuing, valuing our schools and I want to be a part of that. So first, just thank you so much to everyone attending here and online and to Shelley for moderating and especially to the candidates, candidates on stage with me today. I now know how much work this is and you all do too, and how much our families sacrifice for us to do this. So thank you for volunteering for this community and for the school system. I hope my message has landed that I am proud to send my kids to our strong schools in Hudson. Our robust curriculum and strong and dedicated teachers make our community proud. I want to maintain our strong schools and if elected, will make choices that make sure our schools continue on their current path. If elected, I'll be guided by four pillars as I approach any issue. First, maintaining our thriving public schools. We cannot make decisions that move this district backwards and chip at its central role in this community. Second is pragmatism. We have to ensure that all decisions are made in a way that balances short-term needs with the long-run stability while also ensuring that we're not wasting taxpayer resources. Third is results. What works and what doesn't? We need to prepare every student to be well-rounded citizen when they leave our district. When student outcomes aren't where they need to be, we need to be ready to adjust. And fourth is compassion. We have to remember that every child in this district has a different story and life experience. Some have the support they need at home and some need more from their school. Reminding ourselves to be compassionate in our discourse and policymaking will result in the best for our kids. And with that, I thank you and I ask for your vote.
First, thank you, Shelley, in the library for moderating this forum and thank you to all the candidates that are running. As far as collaboration, one thing that we do need to note is that a school board member is one out of seven. And that's actually the coolest part about a school board is that it's a collaborative nature and the nice, our school board has done a really great job in the past several years of being, working together. Because some school boards are not functional. So I would like to have more community conversations and have monthly meetings where I'm available to all community members and teachers and students to hear their concerns so that I can bring those to the board because it's not an ivory tower. I am still a I am still a community member, willing to listen, and I've heard a lot of mention of teachers and wanting to do what's best for teachers, and again, I am the only person that is running and is on the board that has been in a classroom, and I have dedicated my life to education. I am continuing to dedicate my life to education by becoming an administrator to elevate teaching, and I can ask the questions that other people can't because they haven't been in a classroom. And I have worked with some of the most difficult kids that a lot of people would have given up on, and I have seen success, and I know what it takes to have success with all students. So I ask for your vote on April 1st, and thank you for coming.
Thanks to all of you, thanks for being here, thanks for watching, and make sure you put April 1st on your calendar and that you get out and vote. Have a great night, and the roads look much more clear tonight, so just drive home safely.